Everyone, this is John. I have to be in my car, so I actually asked Carl to kind of spearhead this meeting this time. I'll be on the phone.
Carl, if I could, just as a reminder for the recording, for those folks who are in council chambers, which are a few of us, if you could just identify yourself initially with your name before any comments, that'd be great.
Are we ready to get going?
I believe so.
So we'll do the world call. John, we already heard from, oh, okay, right, called calling to order. The June 22nd, 2023 City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee Hybrid Meeting is called to order at 1:02 PM. We already saw that he is here, he's present. Carl Burnett, him, Vice Chair, Erin Rivers.
I'm here via Zoom. I'm wearing a gray or a brown brown hoodie with a blue sweater. Were you still identifying our appearance?
Sure, why not?
Okay, I'm here.
Here in council chambers, wearing a teal green tank dress.
Kelly Crowley.
I'm here via Zoom and wearing a summery shirt with some flowers on it.
Hi, Kelly. Stephanie Etsman.
Hi, Stephanie Etsman. I'm on Zoom and my camera is off, so you can't see what I'm wearing, and that's by design because I'm moving from head to toe and dust and so.
Got it. Whitney Bennett. Not present. Our alternate member Liz Woodfin.
I'm here in chief.
Thanks, Liz. And we've already noted excused absences of Derek Hoffbauer, Corey Sparks, Liz, Deera Martin. Actually, she is here, right?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is our land acknowledgement. Would any COBAC member volunteer to read that for us? Either online or in person?
I'll do it. This is Amanda in council chambers. The City of Bend, we would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north of the Columbia River is the official home of the Confederated Tribes of One. The Confederated Tribes needed this land in the city of 1850 Dodge while gaining regular and customary hunting rights. The Wana Lama or Warm Springs and Wasco or Wasco and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran through this region to the Great Solano Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, so the next item of business is to approve the draft minutes from our last meeting of May 25th. Does anyone move to approve those minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Stephanie. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. The May minutes are approved. We now have a public comment period of four minutes. Is there any member of the public present online? There's nobody here in person. Okay.
Hi, this is John. I just wanted to ask that people speak directly into the microphone when they talk.
Are you able to hear me? Okay, John?
Yes, I just wasn't able to hear the land acknowledgement very well.
Got it. We will work on that. Thanks. Okay, to just listen as well. All right, hearing no public comments, we will move on to an update from our city manager, Stephanie Betterich, City Manager's Office, I should say. Stephanie, welcome.
Well, thank you, Carl and COBAC for having me back for a quick update from the City Manager's Office. As Carl mentioned, my name is Stephanie Betterich. I go by she/her pronouns. Today, I'm wearing kind of a boring olive green sweater. Everybody around me has it's more colorful, so next time I'll make make my apparel a little more exciting. So I have a couple of quick updates to share with the group today. First, I am absolutely thrilled to share that we have a new Equity and Inclusion Director who will be joining us on July 10th. Andres Portella will be the our new Director for Equity and Inclusion. Andres comes to the City of Bend from Arizona. He's worked for both the City of Tucson as well as the Pima County Health Department. In both of those municipalities, he has created their equity strategy and and really launched offices of equity at the City of Tucson and the Office of Health Equity for Pima County, so brings a wealth of experience. Is is his jam is community engagement and with a focus on underserved populations. He has shared through the recruitment process that really working cross-functionally to gain buy-in with departments and community partners and stakeholders is where he really thrives, and so we feel like that's going to be a great skill set and experience to the City of Bend. So you can expect to meet Andres at your July COBAC meeting. Also, a quick update kind of citywide, last night, the city council adopted both their budget and council goals for 2023 to 2025. I know we had a chance to touch on some of those council goals a couple of months ago, but wanted to highlight a couple that I think are really well aligned with the work of COBAC. So under the accessible and effective city government, there are two strategies. One is to advance the city's commitment to equity, and that includes specific actions around developing and piloting an equity framework. As part of that, we'll we'll really be working with council to define what equity means to them. And I'm in conversations with Cassandra. We will be incorporating COBAC's feedback into the development of that framework to make sure that it reflects the priorities of this committee. We'll also be developing and implementing supplier diversity or community benefits program, developing resources to connect with community members who have experienced acts of discrimination so that they have those those resources and the assistance that they need to navigate through those traumatic experiences. And then we're also be working to develop and implement a language access program. So a lot of work happening there. In addition, I know that there's been some interest amongst this committee for some of the exciting things that are happening around community engagement with an emphasis on underrepresented community members. The new block party trailer is part of that, getting out and about in community. There'll also be some new innovative community engagement tools such as community roundtables and listening sessions, so more to come on those. I did want to highlight that as part of the council goal and the budget, that we we really aligned the budget to meet council goals, but also to support the important work of COBAC and your work plan. So there were dollars that were adopted within the Equity Department budget to support the work of your work plan through consultants, through community outreach and engagement, and to make sure that the Equity Department staff has the resources that they need for professional development, so to attend conferences, workshops, to be able to stay up to date with best practices and bring that back to the city.
Thanks, Stephanie. I might have missed it if you said it. What was the budget allocation for those COBAC, for the COBAC Work Plan Support?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I want to say we budgeted a couple thousand dollars for consultants to help to move some of those work plan items forward. We also have dollars within the the Community Engagement Line items to be able to support work within community to support work of this commission or this committee as well.
Okay, thank you. I believe we're a few minutes ahead of schedule. If anyone has any, any questions for Stephanie?
Stephanie, this is Amanda. Can you speak a little bit more to the professional development piece that you were talking about? Like, who is that for COBAC members or is that for city council members and we, yeah?
So that the the professional development is primarily for the Equity Department staff, so for Cassandra, for Lisa, for Andres. But there can also be some dollars within that that budget that if COBAC wanted to do a training, wanted to bring someone in to speak on a topic, we could certainly explore that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Stephanie, maybe online? Okay. Thanks for your time, Stephanie. Thanks for being here. And thanks for the update. Moving on to item six on the agenda, the COBAC Strategic Work Plan or Strategic Strategic Plan Work. Cassandra, do you want to kick us off on that?
Absolutely. This is Cassandra. Thank you, Carl. So this is an opportunity for the next at least 30 minutes for COBAC members to talk about dividing into subgroups for these particular work plans. And based on the information that was shared in the May meeting where folks came prepared with one to two projects from the appendix of the strategic plan what they're interested in. I've kind of allocated three different sections for groups that they can look into, but it would be a great opportunity for us to spend time to talk about some of the ideas as a group and then break off in the subgroups as appropriate in the next month or so. So I've got a few slides we can go through, Carl, and feel free. This one is just kind of a compilation of all of it for for the record. And then the next three slides will address the three groups where I think folks can decide to meet and talk about things. But the first group, if you feel comfortable guiding the conversation, would just be discussing improving transportation and infrastructure. And ultimately, I think what we're looking for is one to two really solid ideas to move forward for the continuation and the duration of 2023 as we know it, and it's flying by because it's almost July. And we have a lot of great opportunities and work ahead of us. And so ultimately, for each of the three groups to come up with one to two initiatives to really work on for this coming time and asking specifically that they be smart goals, so making sure that they are, I'll go to that slide really quick. Really specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely, knowing that we've got the coming six months really to achieve these set out, and that's not to say we can't continue them into 2024, but that is the strategic plan's scope was for 2022 to 2023. So I'll go back to those original slides and we can just open up the conversation, knowing that I know that there are a few COBAC members who are not present today that are instrumental and important in some of these, but I'll just throw it back to you, Carl, if that sounds all right.
Sure. Just to clarify, are we, we're going to start talking about each of these three goals and what we want to do toward them. Are we also going to try to come up with some times for these smaller groups to meet outside of the main meeting?
Great question. This is Cassandra. I have here set out for us, if it's acceptable to the group, some ideas for the deadline that we could give ourselves. So prior to July 27th, the July COBAC meeting, we'd have each subgroup nominate one member to go ahead and schedule out those subgroup meetings to ensure that it happens between now and July, knowing fully well that this is a busy time of year in the summer with the all sorts of activities and recreation, not to mention school is out, so understanding that that scheduling would need to to happen within the subgroups. And then for members to meet within the subgroup, elevate and discuss the one to two initiatives, and then share that back with the main group in the July meeting to say, these are some ideas that we have. We're open to feedback and input from the main group.
Thanks. And would those subgroups be official subcommittees that need to be publicly noticed in their meetings? Or would they be informal groups that don't meet a quorum for the whole?
Yeah.
Committee?
This is Cassandra again, just relying upon the great information that was shared out last meeting from Ian. These would be subgroup meetings since there wouldn't be a formal recommendation that shared with the COBAC group, but rather suggestions and allowance for the feedback and input, so it can be the flexible subgroup format that we have, which would allow for an ease of not having the notice and having to record all the meetings and everything. So flexibility for the groups to be able to schedule as needed for each individual schedule.
Okay. Other questions about logistics of this discussion and our future work groups before we get into our first our first goal? Okay. So our first what's the word I'm looking for? It's not the goals.
An initiative. I'm sorry. This is Cassandra.
Is around improving transportation and infrastructure. We have four people who've been who are on record as wanting to participate in this subgroup, although I don't see any reason why we couldn't be flexible with those groups, right? We have Derek, Whitney, me, and Nick. So some ideas that have been talked about are Derek mentioned accessible recreation shuttles. I would love to hear from him with his kind of inside knowledge of how all of that's working, what the current options are for accessible recreation shuttles. I have to say that as a person with a disability myself, I have not tried taking the shuttle to Mount Bachelor or the the river, the Ride the River Shuttle, or the new mountain biking, summer recreation shuttle that's been operating, and so I don't know much about the accessibility of those things. I would love to hear more from from Derek about that when the next time that he's that he can join us. Just to note that, I guess, in the minutes. Whitney has also expressed interest in accessible on-demand transportation, accessible bus stops, paths of travel, and seating slash mobility for people. Let's see. And.
And Whitney is not present today.
Right. Yeah, I was just realizing that. In fact, I'm the only one of these four who is present today. I just realized.
Good representing.
That's okay. So the on-demand transportation issue is one that I've been thinking a lot about, and I've had some conversations with our city council liaison, Barb. She's here. Barb, do you want to join us up here? Just to note, Barb Campbell is now present in person. I was thinking maybe we could fill the committee in on the conversation that we had informally a few months ago about this issue. And maybe try to see what we could build on from that. We talked about a few different things, one of which is the possible possibility of using MPO funding to incentivize local transportation providers to have accessible vehicles in their fleets. Do you want to provide any updates or just more details or ideas about that?
I don't really have any update, Carl. I guess I'm still kind of stuck at the difference between them having a vehicle, an accessible vehicle in their fleet and them being available more hours than are currently than Dial-A-Ride, for example. Because, for example, the taxi companies. But that that's that's the part I'm still kind of stuck on, Carl, is, okay, so if they have the vehicle, now we want some sort of obligation, if you will, contract to actually use that vehicle. And, for example, I think you told me, Carl, of there's, is there one company now that does have an accessible, an accessible vehicle, but they just don't necessarily accept rides or they won't say yes to taking someone to the airport, for example.
Yeah, so there are a few local companies that are accessible transportation providers. And oftentimes, these companies are thought of or referred to as medical transport companies because a lot of their business is taking people to medical appointments and to the hospital and that kind of thing. And so they tend to operate during set kind of standard business hours, five or six days a week, nine to five or eight to six or that kind of thing. But oftentimes, people who might have a disability, maybe maybe a power chair or or other equipment that won't fit in a standard taxi, might have a need to go somewhere outside of those hours, or they might want to go somewhere outside of the area of service that's provided by the bus system and Dial-A-Ride, which is more or less the Bend city limits. For example, they might want to go to the airport, or they might want to go to, I don't know, the rodeo in Redmond or any kind of activity that's happening outside of Bend. So at this point, there are not any accessible options available to them unless one of those accessible transportation providers agrees to provide a scheduled ride out of town or outside of the normal hours of the of the bus service. And so as Barb mentioned, those companies own vehicles that are accessible for wheelchairs. And so one of the ideas that we had was incentivizing those providers who already own accessible vehicles to be able to provide rides during a during different hours or to a larger area of service. And and potentially, there's you know, financial incentives that the city or the MPO could offer to make that a possibility. That's that's one idea that we had. Another idea that we had is partnering with or working with local taxi companies who under the ADA are not required to provide wheelchair accessible vehicles as long as their their fleet consists entirely of passenger sedans. Most of our taxi companies here in Bend seem to have vehicles in their fleets that are not passenger sedans also, which seems to point to them being out of compliance with the ADA. Not a lawyer, don't know if that's absolutely true. But we do have a compliance office here in the city that oversees taxi licensure. So one of the things that we talked about is trying to figure out whether we might have local transportation providers that are not currently following the law and whether we could provide financial incentives to them to comply with the law by acquiring an accessible vehicle to be able to provide rides to anybody who wants one. So that's another item that I'm interested in exploring further. So where do we go from here? I don't want to use the entire time talking about this issue. Should we? I guess I can volunteer to schedule a meeting to discuss this, a subgroup meeting to discuss this further in an informal way. Does that work, Cassandra?
This is Cassandra. Thanks, Carl. That would be great. I see that we do have Liz with her hand up and online, maybe something to to share. I will send a follow-up email with all of these groups, just specific, and we can we can schedule out from there. And I'll turn it over to Liz.
Oh, right. So, yeah, thank you, Carl, for, you know, talking about the ride, ride availability. Another thing, I'm going to speak for Derek here a little bit. Derek, Barb, Anthony Broadman, and I all participated. Oh, yeah, Cassandra was there, right? So we participated in the in the bus ride and experienced trying to get across a roundabout while blind. And and how every one of them is very difficult. So it was a powerful demonstration. It was really fantastic, well done, well organized, and so I think that might be another thing that Derek would have brought up. He was here. So I just wanted to do that. So and and encourage people if they ever get a chance to do it. It was great. Good group of people.
Thanks, Liz. This is Carl again. Are there specific maybe goals or things that came out of that experience that you thought, wow, COBAC could be doing something about this?
Oh, I think just, you know, continuing to communicate with DOT, Bend DOT, and then the engineering groups on there as they design these roundabouts to consider that every single one of them is different. Every one of them is really hard to find the button, the cross path. You know, sometimes you're, it's it's close in, sometimes it's far away. I just think it'd be really good to to stay involved in the design and and see if we can encourage them, if not help them, sort of standardize how people would pedestrians and people in and wheels of any kind would use these new structures.
Can I say something? This is Stephanie Etsman, and I'm also the co-chair for COCA, and we just had our steering committee meeting a couple of days ago, and we were talking about the event. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was a wonderful event, and and actually, I just wanted to add, the only thing I wanted to say is that we are talking about, and Derek and Kim Curley with Commute Options will probably be able to provide more information. Kim's not a part of this, but Derek is of COBAC. But we're we're thinking of having other additional events similar to this and perhaps trying to restart the disability for a day training also to help with creating that awareness of navigating our city when you experience a disability. So that's the only thing I wanted to add. So stay tuned because hopefully we will be able to have another similar event in our in the future.
Great. Thanks, Stephanie. Should we move on to the next slide and the second area of focus, creating an accessibility accessible community? There's a few people in attendance here who have signed up to be a part of this one. Anybody want to kick us off or bring up a specific idea or goal within this theme that they would like the committee to work on?
Yes, this is John, if it's okay. I would, what I'd like to focus on is just letting the people Uh, yes, this is John, if it's okay. Um, I would, uh, what I'd like to focus on is just letting the people that we represent know that we are a resource and can be uh helpful to them. And also that we have answers for them on common questions that they might have as far as uh enforcement or laws or what we're currently working on. So um, I just, it's, it's my goal to make sure that just about everyone that we are trying to represent know that we act, we exist, um, because I think that makes us better when we get more input from our community.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I agree that um it would be good to, to increase our, our visibility in, in the community so that people know, people have multiple points of contact if they're trying to get something done or make their voices heard about um an accessibility issue here in Bend. Kelly or Liz or Erin, anything to add?
Yeah, something actually that um I noticed um just in my neighborhood this week um was around the parking of the bike-share bikes. And so I'm wondering if um there's some, you know, consumer education that um either we or those companies can provide, just so folks know that when they park their bike, completely blocking the sidewalk, that's making our communities less accessible. So I'd love to just kind of, I, maybe this is something, maybe that's something this group has already um worked on. Um, but I think that's something that I'd love for us to maybe explore options there.
Yeah, I know it's something, it's an issue that uh council member Campbell has um worked on before. Do you want to say anything about that, Barb?
Um, I, we, last year was a bit of a learning curve. Um, as far as trying to get better behavior with those bikes. Um, and I think it's just being the beginning of a new summer, we need to um redouble our efforts to get folks to understand where the bikes can be left. Um, and yeah, Carl, I honestly, I haven't thought about it in, you know, last year. It seems like, I'm, I'm not sure what technology the company has to know where the bikes have been left, um whether they've been left blocking a sidewalk or not. I don't think they have that. Do, do you know, Lisa?
Yes, somebody sent in a barrier removal request.
Because there is one blocking a sidewalk.
Because there was, and that was last year.
Yeah, yeah.
I had sent that, emailed that to you just so you were aware of, you know, what was going on, because I know you.
Yeah, it, it, um, Councilor Campbell, um, and Carl, if I could just chime in, this is Stephanie Betteridge. Um, I think there's an opportunity to um connect with Toby Marks, who is responsible for our micro-mobility and our kind of parking. Um, perhaps he could um in advance the next meeting, provide some information to the committee, and it might be good to have him join at one of the upcoming meetings, just to talk about some of the issues that um this committee is hearing through community, but also um I see it, it has worked dovetailing into a number of your priorities and that are part of the action.
Yes, I, um, this is Lisa. I sent that um request to him, and he immediately had the people remove the bike within the half hour, so.
Yeah, there are mechanisms in place. I'm just not familiar with them, but I think it would be great to, the more people who know how to quickly address that, the better, so that we can make sure that the community is informed, and we can remove those barriers to people moving around. Erin, and then John?
Uh, thanks. I just wanted to add that I'm kind of similarly interested in, um, I guess just sidewalk use in general. Somebody who walks with somebody who has sort of trouble walking, that have a really big pet peeve of being, having bikes come up behind us. And um also, sort of similar related to just how kind of bikes behave in roundabouts and get pick and choose whether they're traffic or pedestrians. I just feel like that uh, maybe through some of these bigger efforts or uh bigger umbrellas, you know, there's just how to use sidewalks in general, and what the, what they're intended for would be a, a good starting point. Um, but this, I, I feel like I'm a little out of the loop from the last meeting or the last couple of months picking this back up. But um, I feel like that topic in general is interesting to me, or I have a personal interest in it, but just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Carl, if I, I was also thinking, while we're speaking of Toby, um, I thought maybe you might want Toby and/or Ben to come in and talk about Brooks Alley. Um, there are some changes coming to Brooks Alley, including speed tables. Um, speaking of disability for a day, one year, we were trying to get through the Taco Bell parking lot on Third Street, which has what looks like a speed table or a raised sidewalk. And I mean, there, I couldn't do it. There was no way I could get up enough momentum in a chair to get over the bump without hitting it so fast that I was liable to just flip backwards. So, you know, a, all of those are concerns in that space as we start making modifications that we're hoping will help pedestrians be safer. Um, so maybe we want to ask um Toby to come in and both of those things. He could talk to us about the blue bikes. It, there, there is enforcement that we can do. I think the thing is just because a bike is where it's not supposed to be now, does it mean that the person who last used it legally left it in that bad spot? I think that's the question with enforcement, but it doesn't mean we can't do anything at all.
Sure, it seems like there could be a campaign encouraging people to leave them in the proper locations. Maybe, maybe there's education about like, what are the proper locations to leave it? Maybe there's a signage thing, I don't know. But yes, I love the idea of um meeting with Toby about this. Uh, Cassandra or Lisa, is that something that we could ask you to schedule for us for next?
Yes.
Next time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
John?
Oh, yeah, this is John. Um, I had a recent experience that I, I told Carl about, but um I was in front of Lone Pine Coffee, and two guys pulled up on their personal e-bikes. And I told them, hey, uh, could you make sure not to put these on the sidewalk in a very nice way? And then they threatened to call the, the uh non-emergency police number on me. So it got me thinking that it really needs to come down to, it almost comes down to like enforcement, but it also comes down to business education, because I, I would imagine that if they go in to order coffee, that someone would say, hey, I noticed that you, you know, you parked out on the sidewalk, uh, you know, when you're done ordering your coffee, can you go back out and move your bike? Um, so I think it's, it, it ties back into our community talk, when we were saying that, you know, we should really educate our businesses on, on rules regarding like, for instance, service animals and everything.
And um, it's the time of year for sidewalk cafes, John, that always means chairs being scooted where they're not supposed to be. And um, so, yeah, I think we can kind of loop all of those things together. And I do think we could um engage our businesses more on those topics. Um, Carl, I just remembered, sorry, it's taking me a minute to get my brain back up to e-bike mentality. Um, what I remember from last year was the nuclear option. There is a nuclear option, and that is that those blue bikes just have to be left at a public bike rack. Um, and that was something we haven't wanted to do. Um, for myself, it's always been such a love-hate. Um, the places where I've noticed those bikes on sidewalks are in residential neighborhoods, which I just didn't expect that people would be using them for that as much as just get from downtown to the old mill, you know, more within commercial. So while I was delighted to see people were using them to get to their friend's house or something, it, it, it means fewer legal place or that, you know, there's not a legal place when they get to that friend's house. So, yeah, the topic needs to come up again, Carl. And that is the ultimate enforcement, I think, that we could do is, sorry, everybody, we just can't any longer let you leave them in place like they're doing now.
Great. Well, let's um, let's put that on the agenda for, for discussion for next.
Great.
Uh, next meeting. Um, and if, if the creating an accessibility community, accessible community subgroup wants to um chat about that in some more detail, we can absolutely do that, too. Um, Lisa, can we get a time check? How are we doing on um, on time here for the strategic plan stuff?
Thirty-five. Um, you're doing, you're doing pretty well, actually, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're doing good. Another five minutes or so.
Okay, so should we go on to the third slide?
Sure. This is Cassandra and Carl from this group with Liz, Carl, Kelly, John, and Erin. Could we identify kind of a captain for the team to schedule the meeting between this and the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, good point. Um, I'm doing the first one, so I'll let someone else um step up on this one.
Yeah, this is John. I'm down to schedule the second one.
Thanks, John.
Our third area of focus is creating a culture of accessibility within the city of Bend organization. Um, we've got Stephanie and Amanda present. Um, either of you want to um talk about some areas of focus within this, this goal?
So this is Amanda, just reading our little narratives here. Um, Stephanie, I don't know if you can see yours. I'll just read what it says here. Um, under your name, it says, um, provide training to engineers and planners about accessibility, improving transportation and infrastructure, and improving accessible on-demand transportation and requirements, and how to increase options. And then mine is more of the affordable housing um piece, working with the Affordable Housing Committee um and partnering with the chamber. So I guess my curiosity is, um, I feel like there's some overlap here, and I don't want to overlap, so I would like some clarity, maybe um from Cassandra or Stephanie Betteridge about how we might move forward with these, with this initiative and those, those smaller action steps. Um, given the previous two initiatives, how they might overlap. Are we um focusing on working specifically with the city of Bend organize, or the committees within the city of Bend?
And this is Cassandra. It's a good question, Amanda, and I think that was posed to COBAC's general body of saying, should we and is it appropriate to combine the two subgroups, kind of at that time, subcommittees together, because there is intersectionality. However, there is also distinction between the two. Um, so that really, I would just open it back up. It's, it's, it's totally and completely up to, up to Stephanie and Amanda in the group, what they'd like to do. Um, I think that's going to be one of the benefits of coming back to the July meeting and saying, here are some ideas. How do they dance and look like with other ideas that are coming from the other two groups? And then we can really hammer out what we want to do um going forward. So it's, that's not really a very clear answer, but to say that it, it depends, and it's all possible, depending on what, what you're really interested in. And I know you've shared, Amanda, the great idea of, of partnering with the chamber, and that may have some sort of overlap with what, um, you know, we've talked about in the previous group, specifically about uh education of community partners and, and chamber and Bend businesses. Do you have any thoughts, Stephanie?
I think you. Let me unmute. Oh, I'm sorry, which Stephanie?
No, go for it, Stephanie.
I'm going to, this is Stephanie Etsman. I'm going to remute and let you um, the other Stephanie talk.
I don't have much to add um outside of what Cassandra touched on. I think that the possibilities are endless, and it's just finding what best aligns with, with the goals and the priorities.
Okay, this, this is Amanda, and, and I totally agree. Um, Stephanie Etsman, what do you think? What are your thoughts?
No, I, I absolutely agree as well. And I think that with the culture, because it does seem like there's a lot of intersectionality and crossover between, you know, creating an accessible city and then a culture of accessibility, and where do you draw that line? And a culture is a little more, more touchy-feely. It's harder to just, you know, it's like trying to nail Jell-O to a wall. But I think that what, you know, a really good example is the blue bike situation. So the blue bikes create an accessible, a more accessible city. However, the culture of accessibility is lacking because the blue bikes are left everywhere else. So that culture is the education piece, right? So how do we educate the community, business owners, um, um, the visitors to Central Oregon? Um, that, that this is a city that, you know, we've got a, a good culture of, of, of keeping our city accessible to all people. Um, and, and using the, um, in the instance of transportation, using those transportation options responsibly. So that would be just my two cents. So it's like, how do we, you know, with the blue bike thing, maybe we, you know, we, we come up with an education um, plan or something, I don't know. But that, that's just an example to try to, you know, I'm, I'm rambling, I'm going to stop now.
This is Amanda. I have an idea. Um, what if Stephanie Etsman, you and I were sort of liaisons for the two um aforementioned initiatives to the, either the city of Bend or the wider community? So that we were taking the information from those, from the meetings of the other two initiatives and taking it to um the Affordable Housing Committee or um the, the city council or something, where we were providing that, um, that channel of communication. Um, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that's a great idea. I, I wholeheartedly agree. I think that that would be um a good way to kind of bridge, bridge all of that. Um, and then, um, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, I was.
I'm in moving mode.
I know. I understand. Yeah, go ahead, Stephanie.
But um, yeah, Amanda, um, a quick thought to, to share with the group. I think there's an intersection between this work and the work of the Human Rights and Equity Commission and Council Goals. And that is creating an equity framework that will be applied to our projects, our policies and our programs. And could we, in a, I think we will naturally, but intentionally um integrate accessibility into that framework so that we make sure that we're always taking that into account and looking at um how do we mitigate any negative impacts to those um who have accessibility um challenges? How do we make sure that everybody has um accessible access to our policies, to our programs, whether it be um transit, whether it be accessing city services? And so I think there's a natural intersection between these bodies of work so that we can really move it forward.
Yeah, I agree. This is Amanda, and um I, I guess I'm curious to know what that would look like. And it sounds like Cassandra maybe has an answer, but um be, uh, before we move on, I was thinking, um, well, maybe this will answer my question. Maybe you'll answer my question. Go ahead.
Thanks, Amanda. And just to build off of the great point Stephanie's making, um, so, so I do have a call out for COBAC members, and it may be Stephanie and Amanda. This would be the perfect place, because I'm looking for one to two members to join the ATRAC current subcommittee that specifically addresses the concerns that Stephanie is talking about and describes, and how to make it more accessible, looking at from, from an equity lens and then framework and all of the building. So this may be a great place to, to, to be able to have that work with ATRAC and in in line with um council goals, and then also ATRAC's um strategic plan as well.
Yeah.
Stephanie Etsman, uh, this is Amanda. Um, I'm happy to be the, the person unless you want to both do it or, um, to be the liaison or the, was that what you would call it? Sandra, like, yeah, or just a member of ATRAC?
A member just to join the subcommittee group. Yeah, officially as, as, as you can and as your schedule allows. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I'm happy to do that. And I was thinking, Stephanie, if you wanted to take over that first initiative, which is more focused on transportation and then, and then I could be a part of the second initiative. I don't know. What, what do you think about that?
That sounds great. Yeah.
Okay. That feels better for, this is Amanda. It feels more streamlined that way and every, working towards everybody's strengths and interests. Yeah. So then I'll move to be a part of this, that second initiative and Cassandra, you want to get me the information for, again, probably because you probably sent it to me before.
Absolutely. That'll be great. I look forward to that. Um, and then between the two of you, um, is there a captain of this particular group that I may identify just from my records?
Do we have to identify, this is Amanda, from this group, since we're going to dissolve this group?
We'll, we'll keep it, we'll, we'll keep it, um, kind of a hidden, as a hidden group, but yeah, between the two of you. But these are the ones that, like a, like a slide. It sounds very exclusive and elusive.
I'm happy to be the chair of, of the two of us. I mean, it seems like, um, there's only, yeah, there's only two of us, but I'm, I'm happy to surround that role.
Okay, great. I think Lisa told us, told me that we need to move on to our next item of business, which is item seven, COBAC Business.
Carl, if I may, just to reiterate, um, so this slide will be available to all and it will go out in an email that I sent to the subgroups. But just to remember, so we've already completed one of the tasks and nominating a member of the subgroup. And then you all will schedule out and meet once during this upcoming month and come up with one to two initiatives that have those smart goals that you'd like to work on going forward. And I'll be in every step of the way with y'all. Thank you.
Great. So we should, we should try to have our meeting, um, within the next month.
Correct.
And we can either do that, um, in person or in some sort of virtual or hybrid way, right?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, great. Anything else before we move on? Great. Let's see. Lisa or, um, or Cassandra, can you, um, remind me how we, how we want to use these five minutes?
Absolutely. If, if folks have any, like, I know we've heard, um, from a few members, Liz, and, um, folks talking about specifically the event that was put on by ODOT and with Nancy Stevens, having an opportunity at the roundabouts to see what, to feel what that experience was like. And Melissa also was there. Or any other events that you've been to and been part of in this last, uh, month that are good for the, good of the group?
It looks like she's put COBAC Business and Roundtable together, so. Up on the slides. Oh, I see. John?
Oh, yeah, this is John. Um, I participated in the weekend event, uh, Juneteenth. I organized the Beer Garden for the Fathers Group. And if there's ever a great time to meet tons of people in our community that are also trying to make a positive difference at, at events like that. So I also encourage everyone to attend Pride at COCC this coming Saturday, um, if you can.
Good eye.
Yeah, go ahead, Barb.
So speaking of that, um, event, we, um, one of the, the, the things that we noticed was the auditory message that you get using one of our pedestrian islands that has the rapid beacon, the rapid flashing beacon. So we're talking about pedestrian crossings that have the push button for the light. The one we were at, the message was, what was the message? Cars may not stop. Traffic may not stop. Lights are flashing. And then that was it. And for, with, with a blindfold, that meant that you had no idea whether those lights are still flashing, whether you've still got more time to get across the street. So, um, I reached out to ODOT because ODOT is actually in charge of all of our traffic signals. And I've reached out to them before about the message at traditional intersections. They've always been happy to help and gotten out there to fix something. But, um, number one, it's inconsistent. Depending on which one, you might get a different message. And, um, and it, and it turns out those, those pedestrian crossings, my understanding from speaking to ODOT is those are in our own hands, what that message is. And it, it, to me, I just think consistency. My, you know, I always think consistency, especially if you're talking about safety. Just try and make it the same for everyone. It's kind of a big project, me, you know, it's kind of a pain. I can only imagine what a pain it would be to actually go around to all of these, figure out what they already say, what do we want them to say? But, you know, maybe the, maybe for this group, maybe this group could come up with a recommendation, what do we want them to say? What, what, you know, do you agree? I thought it wants to say, the light is flashing, the light is flashing, the light is flashing, as long as the light is flashing. Let people, you know, have that auditory message that at least those yellow lights are flashing. With that initial warning that traffic might, might not stop. So maybe if this group actually did come up with a recommendation, I could take that to our streets department and say, how about this? This is what we want all of them to do. We think all of them should have this same message for the same length of time. At that point, I mean, I could honestly volunteer my own self to go around town and start pushing buttons and see, you know, what, what the existing condition is. So that's just what, what came, that's what I really noticed from that day, walking around with a blindfold was, wow, you just really have no indication of how much time you have to get across. So, there you go.
Thanks, Barb. Maybe there are, I'm guessing there are guidelines about what they should say and for how long. Maybe step one is to figure out whether, whether there are and whether we're following them.
Yeah, I, I would think we would just go ahead and do the same as ODOT, even though we're not required to. And again, just consistence. Try and make them all the same.
Are you talking about, um, having the, non, the, the pedestrian traffic beacons that are not at traffic light intersections?
Yes.
Say the same thing as what it says at a traffic light intersection?
I think probably so, Carl. I think the ones at, at, at true intersections have some sort of auditory message, letting you know, you know, sometimes they just count down, I think. I think, I think, I've, I've seen that type in a city before. Just fifteen, fourteen, you know, how many seconds you have to get across. And what that's really telling you is how many seconds the light is going to stay red.
Erin?
Yeah, um, I noticed this in Melbourne, Australia. Their crossing sounds are, it's like a pulsing sound and it speeds up as it's going to turn. So it has a beat to it or a pace. And so if you just Google or look on YouTube, like Melbourne, Australia, crossing, crosswalks or crossing stations, it's, it's pretty intuitive and it's hard to miss. You don't need to speak English or know anything. It's just a, like a pulsating sound that gets ratchet, ratchets up in frequency as it's about to change. So it's pretty, pretty useful auditor-wise.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I, I would hesitate to have this committee take on responsibility for creating a recommendation like that. Because I think that's something that's probably been better studied and understood by people who are experts in that kind of thing. But yeah, having a non-verbal but still auditory, um, signal, like you're describing, makes a lot of sense to me. I know that, um, at a major intersection near my house, Highway twenty and Eighth, um, Eighth and Greenwood, the first thing you hear when you, when the signal changes is, walk sign is on to cross Eighth Street or walk sign is on to cross Greenwood. And then I think you hear some, um, some auditory, um, signal after that, but. Anyway, um.
John, and then we should probably move forward. John?
Oh, yeah, this is John. I just, I forgot to share that, um, Counselor Perkins reached out to me. I guess the climate, uh, friendly town people presented at a committee that she was at. And when they were presenting, they described themselves and she thought that was fascinating and reached out to me and asked about it. And so hopefully that's something that catches on at meetings in the city of Bend.
Thanks. If we have time, I'd like to share just quickly, um, an experience I had. I was recently in Sweden for, um, a little under two weeks and also in Iceland for a few days. And so I got to see some, uh, two countries where there's obviously been a big push to make public spaces and public infrastructure more accessible in recent ways. And yet there are some, some subtle differences from the way we do things here. For example, in, in Reykjavik, um, I noticed that along, uh, the main shopping street, there are, um, mo- most businesses previously had, um, one step to enter the front door. And as a sort of, um, city-based solution to that, rather than leaving it in the hands of the private businesses, it appeared, they had actually, um, built into the sidewalk, um, ramps up to the e- each entrance. So it looked like something where the city had, uh, worked with business owners to provide an accessibility solution there, which I thought was interesting and probably not the way that it would work here. Another thing I noticed in Sweden is just a lot more, um, what I'd call ad hoc, um, accessibility solutions of the kind that you used to see more commonly in the US. Ramps that probably are not up to code, um, or, um, curb cuts that, you know, deviate from the standard way of doing things. Of course, those have pros and cons. They're less accessible for some people. They're accessible for a, a smaller number of people than a totally by-the-book, accessibility solution. On the other hand, they're cheap, they're easier to implement and they make more spaces accessible, at least to some people compared with just not building a ramp at all. So, um, that's all. Just wanted to share, um, some things I saw about, um, ways that the built environment can be made accessible, um, in different ways.
Thank you, Carl.
I guess we're about out of time for the roundtable. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to item nine, um, we have an update on, uh, from Melissa, is it Kamania? Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having me today. I'm Melissa Kamania, the Affordable Housing Coordinator across the street in the Housing Department. And, um, I am, I have shoulder-length brown hair and wearing a cream-colored sweater today. So I came to visit you, um, a few months ago when it was time to review the Fair Housing Proclamation. It was in April and I, I told you slash warned you at the time that I was going to be around a lot and trying to really work with you all to, um, just understand housing issues with accessibility. And so I have a presentation and Cassandra, if you could go to the next slide. Um, we all know this to be true, but, uh, unless we talk about housing discrimination, it doesn't stop. And I hear often in different circles, um, just because it's not talked about or people don't know what, maybe they don't even know that they've been discriminated against. There is an understanding that it just doesn't happen here. And I know that's not true. So I, I'm here to talk to you about a few things. I, Cassandra has some posters that, um, I printed and you all would take a look at those. One of the challenges I already see, these are HUD posters and they're beautiful, but they really focus on wheelchair accessibility. And there's so many other types of accessibility concerns with housing. And, um, I just want to start you thinking about, um, how to really improve representation in the signage and the posters that we use. Next slide, Cassandra? Thank you. So just a really quick history. Um, this isn't new work in the Housing Department. My manager, Rachel Baker, she published an amazing document in 2019 called "The City of Bend Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing." It is a mouthful and it's a really wonderful document that was a great snapshot of Bend at that time and different issues. She also did two surveys that had amazing responses, eight hundred responses and over five hundred responses. So this work is not new. One of the things, though, I went and looked at some of the responses in her surveys and, um, the surveys reached people who like to take surveys. Didn't really inclusively reach who we really want to hear from. And so we're rethinking, um, I think we all have a little bit of survey fatigue anyways. And so we're rethinking how we will be doing this outreach with the community. It won't be exclusively a blanket survey. So I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a second as well. The next slide, Cassandra? So, um, it's time to redo that document that Rachel did in 2019. We have to do it every four to five years in alignment with HUD funding that we get. The name of it now will be affirmatively furthering fair housing. That is a tongue twister. Um, so we're working on that. Right now, where I'm at is in the listening stage. And really, my goals are to gather data from folks that have had housing discrimination. Some of that is educating folks on what housing discrimination looks like. Sometimes it's so subtle that you might not even know that you've experienced it. So I will listen to stories and elevate them, provide resources when necessary. And then I do want to talk about this last little bullet, potentials for policy change. To be really clear, staff do not have, um, the authority nor the place to create policy change or even make recommendations for a policy change. That is, um, our city council who does that. And so what we do then is we just, um, as I mentioned, my job is to gather the information and elevate it. And then if issues come to council and council determines that changes are needed to be made, then that's how change happens. Just want to explain that. Next slide explains why I'm here and what kind of help I need from you. So our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meets monthly and they are presently reviewing requirements and scoring criteria for some applications that are coming up. So we will be having surplus land and then funding applications for projects in the, in the fall. Currently, there's a lot of requirements for projects that are dictated by HUD. Um, there are things like, how quickly can they get their project done? What kind of experience do they have with projects like that? There's bonus points. And currently, we have the option, based on recommendations from that committee, to give extra points for leveraging funds. So if you have other funds from other. Leveraging funds. So if you have other funds from other providers, you get bonus points. And how quickly you can repay, you get bonus points and and that's kind of where it ends. HUD does have requirements about accessible units and it's pretty limited to multifamily tall units. So if. They say if you have buildings with elevators, all the units have to be accessible. If you have buildings that are four units or more. The ground level has to be accessible. If there's. There's just a lot of criteria like that. It's there's nothing about homeownership. I don't know if you all knew that. There are no HUD guidelines for accessibility and homeownership. However, there is a clause that says cities can decide on stricter requirements or they can make their own requirements. And so I'm just bringing this to your attention that. The Affordable. The Affordable Housing Committee will be looking at recommendations for scoring. And if any of you all would like to have some ideas or some suggestions for bonus points or a different criteria that maybe we need to look at. I do invite you to come to the Affordable Housing Meeting. In July, that's on the 12th from three to five, and if you have suggestions for how we can. Include accessibility in our scoring and in our expectations for rental and homeownership. That's the place to bring your ideas. Likewise, July is our focus with the that same committee about accessibility. And so what I'm really here to plead for today, in addition to all of this. We need to hear some stories and I think our Affordable Housing Committee also is interested in hearing what are some experiences? That you all have had with accessing housing, maintaining housing. Finding housing barriers with service animals with having the kind of units where you can live and be successful and have and safe. So if any of you are willing to share your stories, it is a public comment format. But that is the the first domino that falls to make change happen, so I do invite you to that. And let's see, Cassandra, let's see our next slide. Okay, I have one other little doodad, if that's a legal word. I mentioned that we are redoing the survey. Cassandra, if you wouldn't mind passing around this little QR code. So I've redrafted our survey. And what I have done is I created a survey that explicitly outlines all the different kinds of discrimination that HUD. Looks at. So now we're kind of prompting people, have you had this kind of discrimination, that kind? This will not be a public survey and this is draft, so please don't share this outside the community. I'm sharing the QR code with you so that you can. Access the survey and give me feedback. On the questions and the format. How we will be using this is in interviews with people. Because that's really where folks will be feel safe and comfortable and have trust to share their experiences. This is not intended to be a public survey. But in particular, if you get down to the accessibility section and you think that there are things I have missed. Or there is language that is not supportive and inclusive, please let me know. Do you all have any questions for me?
How can we get in touch with you?
That is a great question. I will email Cassandra the flyers, the posters that I sent around, and I apologize for those of you that are listening online. I I didn't send that to Cassandra in advance, but I'll make sure you have that and my email will be there too.
Great. And then. The AHAC meeting that you mentioned is that. In person, online, hybrid.
Hybrid.
And where can we get more details about how to attend to that?
Thank you for asking that. I will send Cassandra all the information. You can attend in person or hybrid and. If you have questions about giving public comment, I I certainly can give you an idea of what to expect and you can offer that. In any way that you want, even written and you we have had anonymous public comment before as well. And I am there to be a support to you. I can't I can't guide you or help tell you what to say, but I'll be a support for you if you need it.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm gonna hang around a little bit. So if you have thoughts afterwards and any other questions, let me know. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Great. So that brings us to. Our Accessibility and Equity Manager update. Cassandra?
Thank you, Carl. Thanks, Melissa, for that great presentation.
All right, addressing Amanda and Stephanie's group initiatives, this is absolutely gonna be talking about that at the end. One of the other asks of COBAC that we've received from the city staff is an invitation to join the Transportation Fee Roundtable Listening Sessions. Which will be occurring in August, September and October. And essentially they're looking for an equity perspective or lens to lend itself to conversations about this potential transportation fee that may be put in place. And I will send additional information. There's gonna be quite a beefy email from me, so it'll be full of gems and we will break it down as easily as possible, but. It will have information on that if you're interested in sitting in that roundtable. And if there's anyone preliminarily at this point who's like, absolutely, count me in, like, let me know. Okay. Great. Liz is interested. Any anyone else who's online who may be? I'll send it an email to you, so you've got time to think and kind of review the obligation. Okay. So that's upcoming. Also to echo John's sentiments of what he shared earlier today to support Pride 2023. And that's gonna be happening happening over at COCC on Saturday from eleven to five, and that's hosted by Queer Creatives Collective. So. Anyone who wants to attend, that'd be great. I know there's a group of us who are going from staff and we'll have a city booth, so stop by if you you do intend to to attend. That would be wonderful.
I would be there with my family.
Oh, that's great. All right. We will see Carl and family. Wonderful to meet them. And going to. I oh, I have things out of order. Section 504 at fifty, I owe you all an email with this. And essentially, the vision and thought behind this is it's going to have, and I'll skip ahead a few slides. It's gonna have an awesome opportunity for each of you to meet with another COBAC member and get to know them a little bit. And also be able to have a conversation around accessibility, disability, the ADA and 504. The limitations, the strengths, the opportunities that we have both within our community. But then also having a chance to reflect on what it means to have that piece of civil rights legislation. And then to identify one of the preeminent members of the section 504. And one of the great things is there is a website that's 504 at fifty that specifically identifies fifty changemakers in this field who've had huge impact. On the civil rights legislation that was section 504. And so ultimately what this group is gonna be able to do is you'll meet with a partner, which will be great. You'll have a chance to talk about what you think are the opportunities, challenges in our Ben community outside of the already subcommittees that you're on or subgroups, I should say. And then really study kind of the the advocates, the activists, the individuals in the space who've made such a difference. And try to glean a little bit of the work that they've done to input on our committee for the work that we do in our committee. So. It's a great opportunity to really celebrate this this milestone, this year of fifty fifty years since this. And also group together to just learn more about each other and then the community and be in community with each other. So that'll be great. And an opportunity, again, I owe you an email with more of the particulars and details to follow. I also will say that we are beginning the preliminary planning of a co-hosted COBAC and HREC event that will be hopefully during Welcoming Week, which is up in September. So that's something that we could also incorporate into some of the identified initiatives. It could be the planning of this and what it looks like and what we'd like. It's really gonna be an event to kick off Welcoming Week and to support and elevate diversity in our community, to celebrate it. And I'm really looking forward to that. So if that speaks to anyone, if anyone says I am a I am a planner, I love parties, I love events, I love, you know, talking about COBAC. Please get in contact with me. I'll send an email out about that too, but there's lots of opportunities. Offsite as well for for things that we can do together. And then lastly, on the slide, I see here that we have the one to two COBAC members to join the HREC Subcommittee, which Amanda, Stephanie, this is thrown out to you. It'll be wonderful to have you join. And ultimately, we're just looking for that accessibility viewpoint to really make sure that's encapsulated within the reporting and resources that are available to community members. So. A lot of exciting things. Again, we pride this weekend coming up, Juneteenth last weekend was wonderful. I know a lot of you attended. John, that's great about the Beer Garden and very many great community members were met and and conversations had. And within that, I think there were some really great boosts that also talked about anti-discrimination and harassment. And what we can work specifically with the Department of Justice and the Oregon DOJ. So with that, I think that wraps up my update, but I will send you, like I said, the promise of beefy or some sort of vegan large tofu email that will be shortly headed your way, so.
Thanks, Cassandra. We have an update from our COBAC Council Member Liaison.
Oh, let's see, we passed the budget last night, so. Yeah, yeah, that, you know, means two more years of work. Stand up next to the mountain, chop down with the edge of my hand. What did I want to tell you? I just thought of something. I I feel like I've been participating in telling you things as they've. Come up. I don't know. Oh, I know what it was, Carl, when you were talking about having been in Europe. Last year, one of our traffic engineers, Robin Lewis. Spent two months last summer in Europe, in the Netherlands, I believe. Learning about infrastructure, specifically bike. She was the most interested in. But I think we know that very often bike and pedestrian infrastructure improvements kind of come hand in hand. Well, we, the Bend MBO filled the last bit of a gap. In order to bring one of those engineers from the Netherlands here. And so. It's coming up this summer. I'm not sure for what amount of time. But I just think that is an interesting thing that is happening. Is, you know, from the perspective of someone who has different infrastructure than we do. What are we doing right? What we could we use improvements on? I just, you know, that's just upcoming. I just thought I would mention that. I'm not sure what the plan is for while he's here, but I'll I'll find out. I'm not sure how how much time he's got and. Who to talk, who he might be able to talk to. But, you know, I certainly feel like accessibility, that just that broader topic of accessibility. Would be something maybe we could share ideas or hear from that person. I'll look into it. I'll find out more about that.
I'd love to hear more about that.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Yeah. I think that's all I know.
Barb, of the council goals for the upcoming year, which which one? Are there any that you want to highlight that you're especially excited about, or do you think that are especially relevant for this committee?
I I can't think specifically of what it would be, Carl. We're working on. Crosstown bike routes. And again, I think that for the most part, that is infrastructure that is shared. Between people who are walking and rolling and biking. We're not talking about actual cycle track. Which I guess is when it really is just bikes going both directions. And so we've decided what we think will be those first two, one north, south, one east, west. Route through the city. And there were some interesting points. Of trying to decide where to send folks. We have excellent paths and trails already. But in some cases. It's like, well, we think people should be on the Canal Trail here. Even though that means they're gonna have to make a right turn on Reed Market. Travel along Reed Market for a block. In order to then connect to another entirely separated path and trail. So that is happening. Last night during our work session of council, we looked at what we think those first two crosstown routes are gonna be. And I think we've got a good idea. But there it parts of it are just aspirational. Some of it is anticipating crossing on Reed Market, which we think will also mean an undercrossing. Going under Reed Market at Ninth Street. I I just, I feel like, wow, if we just had absolutely nothing at all, it would be a lot easier. Than the kind of hodgepodge that we have of, you know, we have some excellent paths and trails. That are fully separated, entirely safe. And, you know, how do we hook all of those bits and pieces together is the challenge. Oh, and then the other is sidewalks along Highway twenty. Between Third Street and Twelfth Street Northeast. That's been a project that's been in the works for years.
Oh, I'm so interested. That's my that's my HUD.
Yeah, me too, me too. I was one who absolutely made sure. That the city put in a healthy contribution in order to improve all of those sidewalks. ODOT was just gonna do the curb ramps. And it's not, you know, Carl, those sidewalks are bad for so many reasons.
Really awful.
Including power poles in the middle of the sidewalk. So, you know, very excited, but it's it's gonna be disruptive. There's no question. They're repaved, they're doing it, the paving over new curb ramps, new sidewalks. I don't know, I I I think of it, having gotten both of my knees replaced during COVID, you know, it's like that. These detours, it's like having surgery where you have to go through all of this pain to finally get to the new knee. Or to the new improved Newport corridor, for example. Sometimes when you're in the middle of it, you certainly question, is it even worth it? What was I thinking? We should just leave it alone, but yeah, we've got a lot of construction out there. And, you know, I'll see if I can find out. When we need to. Get our voice in there in like those crossings, you know, things like those crossings.
Thanks, Barb, for always keeping us in mind.
Of course. Thank you, Carl.
All right, the next City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three. From noon to one thirty. Note the time change means the meeting starts at twelve PM.
And lunch will be served.
Oh, and lunch will be served. Is there any further business? For today? Okay, hearing nothing, the meeting is adjourned at two twenty nine PM.